Good evening and welcome to Long Meadow Public School Committee meeting. Tonight, Monday, January 26th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our mission statement, the Long Meadow Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. With the weather, the way it is tonight, we're going to change some of the agenda and try to get us all out of here safely as quickly as possible. So Katie, can you just address correspondence, please?
We have a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis of the Lower Pioneer Valley Center and Technical Education Center dated January 5th, 2015 regarding the Student of the Month awards for December 2014, and the Long Meadow students recognized we're Benjamin Weisman for Graphic Communications 2. We also have an emailed note from Ms. Lori Bernardi dated December 23rd, 2014 regarding policy JICFB bullying prevention.
Thank you. Any visitor comments?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, thank you. Town manager Stephen Crane, I just wanted to just announce briefly that town offices will be closed tomorrow, and an announcement on whether or not they're open on Wednesday will be made tomorrow. Trash and rubbish collection will be pushed back one day similar to a holiday schedule, so if you normally get your trash picked up on Tuesday, please don't put it out tonight or tomorrow. They'll be coming around Wednesday morning for that. And then the Governor Baker has instituted a motor vehicle travel ban starting tonight at midnight, and that'll run until further notice. And so I just want to make sure everybody knows to really do not go out unless it's an emergency, and to stay safe. Our crews will be on all night working to clear the snow, but we really encourage everyone to stay off the roads, and the Governor has in fact banned vehicle travel.
Thank you. Stay safe.
You too.
All right. We'll quickly do school committee comments before we have a quick presentation, so...
I just have a...
Hello?
The town of Long Meadows calling?
Yes.
That would be Chief Eric Madison.
It's not Halloween, so what's he doing?
About car lines. At the center today, there were people handing out information about the vote no at the town meeting on February 3rd for the Long Meadow Shops, and I know that it's a really captive audience, but it just seems like maybe not the right place, even though it's not technically school grounds, to knock on people's windows to hand them your political comments.
People should know they're not from the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was confusing for at least my mother, who took the paper. She came home and was a little frazzled after the thought that, you know, the schools are telling her to vote no. So we're not.
And isn't it policy that anything distributed on or around schools needs approval from the superintendent's office?
It does.
Okay. So that would be something to keep in mind as well, and none of these have been approved. Any other school committee comments?
Just a quick reminder, the town meeting for this Long Meadow Shops project that some people are walking our car lines about is actually next Tuesday, 7:00, here at Long Meadow High School in New York.
All right. Cam or Michelle, anything?
I do not have any.
Okay. So moving the agenda around just a little bit, we will not be having a presentation from Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. For our member agreement, we will reschedule Mr. Churchill for another meeting, along with the school principals with their school improvement plans. Not that we aren't dying to hear about them, but we prefer their safety. So we have the educational opportunities at LHS. Mr. Landers has stayed so that we can get that taken care of for him, so I will turn it over to Mr. Tom Landers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to talk, leave an update to the committee on educational opportunities booklet for Long Meadow High, for our students and our parents, and you should all have a packet in front of you. We don't have many changes this year, but we have three new courses, really kind of two new courses and one adjustment to an existing course, and then we have some improved language to talk about the waiver policy. And also, I included some information from Meredith Laughlin, Department Chair, just to let the committee know the kind of work that goes on in our academic departments and the kind of work that we're trying to do with the middle schools with vertical cooperation, collaboration, and alignment. So I will start by talking a little bit about the alignment, realignment in math and prerequisites. You have a copy in your packets, a letter from Meredith Laughlin. In this document, every year we try to update it and improve it and see what language we can include or adjust to make the opportunities of students and parents more clear. But this document from the math department sort of captures what many departments do. I think that the math department does a particularly good job, and in the last year, year and a half, they've been working diligently with the middle schools to make sure that our transition to the ninth grade is a better one than it has been in the past, that we clarify what our expectations are. And we took input from the seventh and eighth grade middle school teachers, and then also to look at the prerequisites of existing courses for ninth graders going into 10th grade, for 10th graders going into 11th grade, and such. So that's just a flavor, but I wanted to include that. That is not going into the Ed Ops book itself or statement, but it exemplifies the type of collaboration and work that they are doing. And that leads into the document on waivers. The policy of Long Meadow High School is to allow parents to have the ultimate decision on what courses that their sons or daughters take. That's the way it should be. We believe in that. But we didn't have a lot of information regarding waivers in the booklet. We had about a sentence or two, so we wanted to expand that, and we wanted to remind students that waiving into a course should be done after considering things carefully and thinking about academic implications and thinking about whether or not they think that they would have gaps in depth and breadth of the information that they had if they're moving from a middle-level course to an honors or an AP course. The ultimate decision is theirs, but we wanted to include that. So you have that page as well, and that will be added to page 13, and that will give much more detailed information. And the courses that we are adding this year, there are two new courses and one update of a course that we have. English Foundations. English Foundations, we have a, we are in our second year of the Life Skills Program, and in order to serve our students in the Life Skills Program better, in order to more honestly report that curriculum to the Department of Education, we are proposing the English Foundations 1, 2, 3, and 4, which would follow 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And the caveat of this course is that this is an English course. This is taught by an English-certified teacher. This prepares our students for graduation. It's graduation requirements. It also prepares students to be successful on the MCAS exams, but it is not a college preparatory class. Although both fiction and nonfiction will be studied, there's significant modified pacing and excerpting of certain materials to allow the students to work at an appropriate pace. And we have to report and codify certain courses to the Department of Ed every year, and we think that this is more, this clarifies the nature of the course and also is a more honest representation of what is going to take place in the course on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. So again, that would be, to get into this course, you'd have to be in our Life Skills Program or recommended by both the principal and the director of guidance. So that is a new course, really four new courses, because you could take them in all four years. Our other new course that we're proposing is Advanced Placement Macroeconomics. We're excited. This is, this marks the introduction of AP courses into our Business and Technology Department, which we've been trying to do for a few years. This would be open to 11th and 12th graders, follows the College Board curriculum. Matt Flanagan, Department Chair, would be teaching this class. He's excited. He's been to the AP trainings already, and this is really in response to feedback from students who said that they wanted to challenge themselves more academically in the Business and Technology Department, but they were losing or not being able to have certain students remain in the electives in the 11th or 12th grade. So this is in response directly to student feedback, and we're excited about adding another AP opportunity for LHS students. And lastly, we have an existing course, Community Service Learning. It's in its ninth year. It's open to 12th graders. We are proud of the work that our Community Service Learning students do. They go out and they represent Long Meadow in both Long Meadow and in Western Massachusetts. The foundation of the course is that they have to be engaged in various community projects every quarter, and they also have an academic component. So the proposal from Megan Schwartz and Matt Flanagan, this is a course that's taught in both the Social Studies Department and the Business Department, but Social Studies has been our mainstay, and Department Chair Megan Schwartz has done great work over the last six years with this course. And their proposal is that we allow it to be somewhat more flexible and make it into a semester option rather than a year option. And the feed, and again, this choice is because of student feedback. Even though we have healthy numbers in those courses, we have received feedback that students would have taken this for at least one semester, but they couldn't if they were going to lock in for an entire year. If a student is successful in Semester 1, he or she can take Semester 2. So we're not stopping anyone. It would just allow a student who might back this up against maybe Asian Studies or some other electives, if it was an American government, et cetera, they would be able to at least expose themselves to some community service and get that experience. And if they did a semester, they would still be exposed to two major community service projects a year. Right now, they're exposed to four. So our goal is to increase the overall amount of the percentage of the senior class that gets access to this class. And at a future meeting, we are going to come, it was canceled for the January 12th, but the community service students and teacher are going to come, and we're going to talk a little bit about the types of projects and the types of work that we're doing in Long Meadow and Western Mass. So those are our proposals. Those are our adjustments to the educational opportunities for 2015, 2016, and we're excited to get going on the process of scheduling, which will begin, the education of that for current eighth graders is going to begin next month in February, and then scheduling will begin in late March and April.
Any questions for Tom? You're going...
I just like the addition of community service into a semester. It seems like most students would be able to take that opportunity of that. It sounds like some of them are sometimes locked up because of the demand of all the AP courses and other things if they headed towards specific majors, so I think it's great.
Question, would students be allowed to take two semesters of CSL?
Absolutely. So if they take Semester 1 and they're successful, and they want to take Semester 2, they can do so.
Thanks, Greg.
And I know John Fitzgerald's not here this evening. He's not feeling well, but he asked that I make a statement about economics, is that he feels that it should not be in the Business Department but in the Social Studies Department because it's not representing any other alternative systems other than those that are present in the United States, thereby making it Social Studies, not Business.
So John is correct that economics is in the Social Studies standards and frameworks. Matt Flanagan is both a business and a Social Studies certified teacher, so he meets that criteria, and he has more passion and more fervor to teach the course, although we've had some people who've expressed interest in general economics, which Matt also teaches. The demand at LHS seems to be in the Business Department. And AP courses take an even more commitment. Some are work and some are correcting, but John is right. It's a social studies course, but Matt Flanagan is the best, meets the best of both worlds. He's certified in both areas.
Well, thank you for explaining that. I'm sure John will be happy to hear that. Any other comments or questions?
If you were on the committee last year, you might remember the students, the school committee's student advisory council asked for AP Econ last year. It didn't happen just because of a couple issues with the timing, but I'm really happy that it's happening, and I know that a lot of students go from intro to business, accounting 1, accounting 2, and then there's not really something for senior year other than like CSL and stuff. So this will be a great, great option.
Absolutely. All right, so could I have a motion, please? Page four? Well, four on mine.
I move that the school committee approve the educational opportunities changes for the 2015-2016 school year as presented in the document titled Changes to Long Meadow High School Program of Studies 2015-2016.
A motion. Second. Any other discussion? Okay, seen none. Call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Be safe going home.
Question about that. If we didn't approve the changes to the opportunities booklet, those changes would still take place, it just wouldn't be in the book?
No, it didn't take place.
Okay. Making sure.
Okay. So, moving along... Marie, you had said you're going to waive a report this evening in consideration of time, as I will. So Joseph, would you like to do a brief?
My report will be incredibly brief.
We like that.
First, just some sport reporting. Our swim team is currently undefeated, so props to them. There was a girls' basketball game tonight. It was canceled. Good luck to them on that rescheduled game. We, as a member of my class, Connor Strain broke the school's record for the high jump indoors, six foot, six feet, four inches. Congratulations to him.
Wow.
And all the other teams. So there were some questions about parking, and we, in our SCAC report that will happen in February, we were going to report on the effects of the change that this committee made a couple months ago. Before the price change went into effect, there were 63 parking passes sold at the, basically, September of this year. Administration estimated that would be about 30% compliance. After the change, as of January 15th, the district had sold 181 parking passes, so it's about 160 more. Administration estimated that to be like 99.9% compliance. Overall, incredible, really well-received, and the students couldn't be happier.
Thank you.
And just basically, there are some of the things that we were going to present in our SCAC report. We'll just present them in February, and we're still working on everything that we've been, that we've been talking about at the last couple meetings, so.
Great. Joseph, I'm curious, because we've had some pushback on reducing the transportation fee. Are there students who use the cars to get to work after school?
There's a lot, a lot of students. A big chunk of, mostly the senior class are employed, and so it's really helpful for them to be able to come right to school and then go right to work.
Working, saving money for college.
Exactly. A lot of people are employed at the Long Meadow Shops, at the plaza across the street and throughout the town.
I hope the community takes note of that, because there's a perception that we reduced the parking fee and that we only have wealthy children that park in our lot, and I want to go on record saying we have a lot of hard-working students that have jobs after school that are saving for college, and it's necessary for them to have the car to get to work.
I think it's also interesting that in previous years, and you just mentioned it, that the number of students actually purchasing passes was much, much lower than the number of students actually parking.
Right.
And so by lowering, and we've actually encouraged them to get a pass...
Increase compliance.
Right.
To comply with the rules, which is, I mean, granted, they should have done it to begin with. It doesn't make a great excuse just because it was expensive, but, you know, that makes it easier so that we know who's actually not supposed to be here, and that's a real safety concern, more than anything else, is, you know, having 100 or 90%, 99% of our students tagged and in the parking lot actually does wonders for knowing when there's cars that shouldn't be here that are here.
Yeah, absolutely. The majority of students who do have cars bring them here, and so overall, it's really well-received by, and it really wasn't like a class, well, not well, kind of thing in our class. I mean, even people that don't use parking passes, don't have a car, they were still happy with the decision in my class.
And I... Solidarity.
And I just wanted to say thank you to the SCAC committee for being understanding of us moving your schedule around to try to accommodate business and weather conditions, so we appreciate that.
One more thing, in case you missed my announcement, the Jet Jotter was supposed to be published today, but due to this weather and snow, it'll be published either Wednesday or Thursday, weather allowing. The editor-in-chief, Sanjay Johari, asked me to distribute a copy to each of you, an advanced copy.
You're not getting a press pass.
Okay, I believe that's on their other agenda.
That's the next meeting.
I'll let the record reflect my position on that.
All right. I'll give you some updates at the next meeting.
Somebody else wants one, they can come ask.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joseph.
I'll go with all.
Let's move on to the financial report. Since John isn't here, Tom, would you mind giving a summary of the finance subcommittee?
Sure.
Or Liz, did you want to do it? I'm sorry. Okay. I didn't want to look over you.
Thanks, Liz.
There are two items on the agenda for consideration tonight. The first is to approve a tuition for the full-day kindergarten program. Our current tuition is $3,000. The finance subcommittee at their last meeting discussed and voted to recommend a tuition rate of $2,750 or a reduction of $250 over the current rate for next year's tuition for the full-day kindergarten program.
Okay, so let's start with a motion, and then we can have open discussion about this.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee set the fee for the optional full-day kindergarten program at $2,750 for the 2015-2016 school year.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Michelle?
Sorry, I didn't know we were ready to do this yet, so in terms of, I'm not comfortable setting the fee, or, I mean, I personally am not comfortable until we have more budget talks together as a group, or...
Well, I think the reason we need a recommendation is registration packets are due to go out at the end of this week, based on our previous years, moving it up so that it's in line with other programs in the area, so parents can make a decision of whether they wish to enroll their children in Long Meadow's school program versus other programs that also require deposits. So that's why it's coming before us this evening. I know we don't have full-budget information, but unfortunately, I believe we need to make a decision, because letters are due to go out Friday, Diane?
They're supposed to, we'll see if we can get them out Friday. Friday or early next week.
Right. Weather-dependent, but Tom, did you want to add anything to that?
Well, we currently have about 120 paid students in the program, so the proposal with this year's enrollment numbers, right now, we are expecting, at least on the census, a reduction of about 20 students, but that would translate to about a $25,000 to $30,000 reduction in revenue based on the lower tuition rate than what we currently have.
Don't we have that same sort of like, oh, we're going to be down about 20 kids next year? We have that talk about now every year, and then as we get closer to the start of school, it ends up being pretty even or more than...
Really?
Last year, we were, we were saying, oh, we've got like 75 kids. 75, right?
We made, we mailed out like 140 packets last year. This year, we're down to 120.
And last year, the census was off by one.
By one.
But the year before, it was dramatically off. So we're not really seeing a pattern here.
How many packets have we sent out last year? Like 140, we get right at the beginning, and then we had more students come afterwards. It's hard, because I know a lot of parents aren't on the census, where they move to town after the census information.
Right. So unfortunately, you know, the number of students enrolled is always a moving target. You know, it even fluctuates once the school year starts. We have students who move to the district who enroll. You know, and part of this discussion that we need to have comes from our own goal-setting as a school committee, saying that we committed to reviewing kindergarten fees on an annual basis, based on, you know, us implementing a broader full-day program, you know, and it, so we're fulfilling that. We're looking at, you know, we're having the discussion, can we sustain another decrease like we did last year, which last year, the fee decreased by $1,000. Financially, that's not possible this year with the preliminary budget numbers that we're looking at. But we also, at least from finance subcommittee, and Liz, you can chime in if I'm speaking out of turn, is that we, we felt committed to the fact that we're looking at it, that we understand, you know, we're hearing what the parents are saying, but also being fiscally responsible for all students in the district. Katie?
So let's say that if we say that we set the rate at, it's 2,700 now, and it, you know, as we go through the budget, it looks like we could maybe even lower the rate, is that possible to lower it further, or do we lock ourselves in now?
Well, we would just change the number of payment, like, since it's split into four parts, the payments, we would just reduce them, right?
So by, we're just saying we will not go higher than this rate?
Well, it gives, it gives me an idea to plan for in terms of revenue that we would expect. If the committee decides based on what they see in the budget that they want to make adjustments to how much revenue we were going to receive, then we obviously can do that. With enrollment, with the packets, we ask for a down payment when they register of, currently, it's $600, so we obviously would adjust that based on the tuition that the committee votes on.
Michelle?
I guess I just, I thought we'd be talking a little bit more about doing, is this the best we can do? And I know that we're in the middle of talking about budget and what we don't have and what we want to have. And I guess, you know, can we talk about how the program went this year so far, how the half-day students were doing versus the full-day students? You know, do you feel comfortable that if we can't pay for this for free, that our half-day students are still getting their needs met and succeeding? Do you know what I'm asking? Before I, yeah?
We had approximately 13 students in the half-day program. Parents are very pleased. The teachers are focusing on giving the overview of the curriculum to make sure that they're covering the same materials. Clearly, the full day has more in-depth time. They also have more playtime and technology time. It's extremely difficult. I think finance subcommittee looked, because I think the wish of school committee was to have no kid for kindergarten, but the numbers are coming in across the board for the budget, and it's looking like it's going to be a challenging year. We just got the collaborative numbers in, which a large part of our special education budget is based upon, so Tom is getting more information daily on what we need to plan. I would support finance subcommittee's recommendation in terms of budgeting now. Katie, your question is a good one. Should we be able to do something later? I think we could address that as the budget process goes on. As we put together this budget for you and present next week, we have a lot of questions to ask and answer about transportation, kindergarten, in terms of whether or not we want adjustment counselors in the elementary and middle schools. So we do have a lot of discussions that I think, you're right, Michelle, it needs to be part of this framework, but we're also in need of having some figure to give parents
of having some figure to give parents that we can move ahead. So it's a precarious situation to be in.
Well, it's hard, it's hard to make, obviously, it's hard to make a decision about what it should be when we don't know what the numbers are, and that might be the flaw in the system, but, you know, that's...
Right, but in respecting the fact that parents, you know...
We said we were going to do it.
Might need to put deposits on other programs, you know, being in that situation, I certainly can appreciate and empathize with that.
Truth is, we said we would move the deadline up, I think that we just obviously, probably didn't do a good enough job anticipating that we wouldn't know what the budget looked like when we set these fees.
Right.
So it's kind of taking a shot in the dark. Now, you know, obviously, I'm supportive of reducing the fee further, so, you know.
And we have unknowns, we have negotiations, there are a lot of unknown factors.
Lot of unknown factors.
Tom and I have both been in touch about the collaborative, about getting those numbers in. Tom was very conscientious, asking for numbers in December and January, and they just came in, so there are a lot of factors that leave us unable to give you a ballpark figure right now. Finance subcommittee did look at what some of the impending costs will be, and this is the best recommendation that we can make to at this time.
And I think even last year, at this point, when we had to come up with a number for the letters to go out, for enrollment to happen, we didn't have a complete picture of the budget at that time, either. I mean...
Right.
Unfortunately, it's a fluid process, and we're trying to, you know, accommodate budget along with accommodate, you know, parents' needs for worrying about enrolling their children, and what the best program and solution is for their individual families.
I wanted to say, Tom, do you have a number of what we had talked about, if, you know, how much to reduce it, if we reduced, how much it would add to our general fund budget? Do you have the number of how much it's going to add to our budget, just by reducing it that much?
Again, it's difficult to peg exactly the number, because it'll depend on enrollment, and then the number of sections we have.
Right.
Again, using what the census has for 100 students, with the loss of revenue of the current number of paid students to 100, and then decrease in the tuition, anticipate that we're going to have to pick up upwards of $70,000 in the general fund for the offset of the lost revenue from the program.
Right, so even though it, I feel like it doesn't seem like it's a big gesture, it's a gesture, and it is taking a big impact on our, so you need to consider it that way.
Have we, do we have any performance measures for the kids that are half-day, in comparison to the kids that are full-day? Is there anything to show that they're performing as well in the areas that parents were concerned about before?
The administrators are overseeing AIMS Web right now, and they're entering data into the computer. Each of the principals will be reporting to me an administrative team in the next two weeks.
Okay.
So I will see that data. We did ask, the testing has occurred, and it's just a matter of getting it into the computer and doing presentations, so at that time, I can give you more detailed information.
I would be comfortable knowing that they were performing equally, or, you know, then...
From what I understand, from the parents who chose half-day, they chose because they wanted half-day, it wasn't, so it wasn't...
It wasn't solely financial.
No, and it was, the parents that I know who are registered in half-day are really, they're happy, and they spend the other half of their day still, you know, like kind of academically engaging their kids, just...
When we had our forums back in November of 2013, we heard from several parents, and continued to hear from them during the whole process last year, that they, especially when talk of mandatory full-day with being loaded, that that wasn't something they were interested in. So I think that, you know, I can't speak for all 13 of these families, but I think that there's a healthy representation of those families in the half-day program.
And to Katie's point, the other motion that we need to consider from finance sub is the sliding scale, approval of a new sliding scale, and I think that by us last year adopting the DESI sliding scale, it offers a lot more opportunity for families who might be financially strapped, or it would be a burden or hardship to apply for decreased tuition and/or waiver, so...
Interesting, our new sliding scale does that, or?
The one that's currently in effect, and what this, the one that'll be before us next, the next item agenda, is just an updated version of that from DESI with the new 2014-15, or 15-16 numbers. So same concept of the sliding scale, which is much more inclusive than our previous sliding scale had been.
So, given the fact that we're not 100% sure on what our budget looks like yet, because we're still working on that, we can possibly approve it as-is, with the hopes that while we are going through this process, because we, I mean, we all sit here with the huge desire to decrease this fee.
Absolutely.
Because we all know how, we would love, so maybe we can just kind of say that...
Maybe we can say this is the maximum, but we're hoping to do better, is that something that we can, so that...
I think we can vote on it as presented, which is setting the fee at 2,750, and then should we find as budget formulations and more concrete data come in, the finance subcommittee, I think, would certainly entertain reviewing it again, if the circumstances allow for it.
And I think there should be a discussion, as you look at the total budget. I wish that we could offer free full-day kindergarten, I'm fully in accord with all of you, and I know that all of you had your heart set on that, but when you're looking at the total budget picture, I think that you need to make a decision based on that, but I think it should be part of the discussion at that time, because if you were to not charge and have a $300,000 deficit, I think that's what it would be, Tom, if we reduce fees, what is that impact on the budget? I think it should be visited to see what would happen if you left it, the fee that you're recommending tonight, and what would happen if you took it out. And at that time, you can decide whether or not the committee can afford to reduce the fee further.
I think we need a full picture before we talk about, you know, making any additional movements on this.
You do.
You know, it's like, like you said, it's hard to, it's hard to do it right now, let alone, talk about doing it more. You know, ultimately, I think that this is progress, it's not ideal progress for anybody, I think that we'd all like to see it further at the moment, but I do think that, you know, having the option to bring it back at some point before, you know, before the budget is set, allowing us to, you know, move some stuff around, if, you know, if we know it's not going to be impacting other programs, and if we know that we're doing it in a way that's sustainable, then, you know, I'm very supportive of that, and, you know, if we're not able to do that this year, then I'm continually supportive of making incremental decreases, because, you know, I think what we heard last year, and what I think we all agreed with, even though, you know, we had to make tough decisions about it, is that the fee is really kind of something that we shouldn't, you know, that we shouldn't have, but our ability to not have it is, you know, not something that really exists right now, as terrible, you know, as difficult as that is to say and to acknowledge, and so I think, you know, I'm fully open to reevaluating, making reductions to this fee as we go through the next couple of months, but I think to do it any more right now, which I know you're not advocating, but I think to do it any more right now.
Well, it's what I would want.
Right.
I don't, I just want to kind of play around with our chess pieces, as they, to see if this should be prioritized over some other things that we might, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and once we take a look at the budget, I mean, you know, every member of the committee has the opportunity to, you know, make amendments, you know, or to enter amendments and put them up for a vote, you know, and that's certainly something that can happen up until July 1st, essentially, and then, you know, and even then, but, so, you know, I think that we just, I think we approach it with caution, and if we're able to do something, we do it.
And as a parent of a student pleasing towards kindergarten?
She is.
She is, very quickly. I, you know, I appreciate, like, knowing how much it's going to be, and knowing that, like, at least we're moving in the right direction, so I think that, you know, I would love it if it were free full-day kindergarten, too, but I think, you know, at least we're making that progress with the sort of caveat of, you know, we're going to look at it again.
The good news is, it's not going on.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's progress.
Well, and the good news would be, would be if the town allowed us more funding than what they've afforded us the last five years, so that we could add new programs.
There's less of a chance of there not being a blizzard tomorrow.
I just want to just mention that.
We have a lot of moving pieces that we do need to keep working at, and I think as we get down to discussion, it's going to be a very difficult discussion next week. I'm sure that we'll do what is best for all of the kids, it's hard, it's hard to do this, but you're right, when you see this framed with the rest of the budget presentation, it will give you more information to...
Right, and I know...
And I think as we see, you know, test scores, look...
The kindergarten teachers report phenomenal progress, the kids are way ahead of what they used to be, the new curriculum's working, the half-day teacher is supplementing, she meets regularly with the full-day teachers to see what's happening in terms of curriculum, so there's an awful lot that's gone in. The AIMS Web scores showed a great increase in the first couple of months for our kids who were struggling, so that we are seeing, we are seeing remarkable progress, and I will know definitely as we hit that midway point, and we see that data in the next two weeks. But all reports, kindergarten teachers are absolutely thrilled, and I think our ratio of one adult for every 10 children, and it's even less than that in many of our classrooms, is working very well, and that's one thing that the fee enables us to do, is to make sure that we have an aide and a teacher in every classroom.
Okay, so barring any further discussion, we have a motion on the table of setting the fee for the optional full-day kindergarten program to $2,750 for the 2015-16 school year.
Can we add words to that? Can we change the...
You want to amend that?
Is that, you know...
That's fine, you can make...
With what we were talking about, with the hopes of, you know, making that, setting that as the maximum, but that we are going to look into it further, to see if we can discount it more based on our budget? Is there anything...
Should we, what if we just said not to exceed $2,750 for the year? Because, I mean, we can revisit it at any point in time, and that way, we've set the max.
So you want the motion, Michael, will you make the motion, then, with the change for him?
Sure, so I move to amend my previous motion to add not to exceed $2,750 for the 2015-2016 school year.
Okay, so do I have an amend, do I have a second to the amendment?
I can amend it further.
Can you add that the committee will be re-examining it, as, you know, or that the committee intends to examine it?
I think that's implied.
Well, just so that the language that's going out to the public is clear, that we are still hoping...
I think you could add to the amendment, further discussions on the fee will be held during full-budget discussion.
On reducing the fee will be held during budget discussion, how about that?
So I make, so I'll, you know, I'm going to withdraw my previous amendment, and I'm going to make a new amendment.
Okay.
I move to amend the previous motion to add the language, so that the, to move on the subcommittee recommendation, the school committee shall set the fee, the optional full-day kindergarten program not to exceed $2,750, and that school committee should revisit this in the coming months, as the budget is developed, for the 2015-2016 school year as presented.
In case there's a chance of reducing it further.
In case there's a chance of making further revisions, what do we...
I think that that's leading people to believe, that that's a leading statement to the public, saying that, yeah, we think there's more money available, and we're just not disclosing it now.
So what if...
I think that's very leading, and I don't want to mislead anybody in the community with getting their hopes up, that it's going to go lower as we have discussions in the next two months.
But until the whole committee sees all the budget information, I can understand why you'd want that caveat, because I don't think they can honestly know what you know, because the chair's privy to all of the discussions about what's happening.
Right.
So you've seen information they haven't.
True.
So I will say again, I support the finance committee's motion, but I do think that you will concur more when you see the full budget, but I think it's definitely something that could be on the table, everything will be when the full budget is discussed.
And I'm perfectly comfortable with, and the school committee should revisit their decision as the budget continues to be developed. I just am not comfortable with the language in hopes of further reductions.
I think it's implied, the fact that we're revisiting implies the fact that we do hope, right?
Especially having the language in there that says not to exceed, so, okay, so, I move that the school, by the recommendation, the finance subcommittee, that the school committee set the fee for the optional full-day kindergarten program at a fee not to exceed $2,750 for the 2015-2016 school year, and that the school committee shall revisit this number during the budget process.
Second. I have a motion in a second.
Does that work? Okay.
All right, so we are voting on the amended motion. All those in favor?
It's Robert's rules.
All right.
We get the, huh?
So we got to vote on the motion, to, we voted on the amendment, and we voted on the full motion?
Yes, so we voted to accept the amended motion language, now we need to vote on the motion itself. So, all those in favor of the motion as amended. Okay, and Kim, you were asking?
The meat of our budget, I guess, because there's a lot of budget discussions.
The budget presentation will be Wednesday, February the 4th, at 7:00 PM here, that is our next...
So that's next week?
Next week. The entire budget will be presented by...
From the town, to us, or for us?
Our budget will be presented to us.
Will be presented to us?
Marie and Tom and the Edmond team will present their budget to school committee, and then, the meeting that is scheduled for February the 9th, our regular school committee meeting, that will be a public forum on the budget.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, do we have another meeting scheduled that week, to vote on any changes?
Not at this time.
We may want to consider adding a second meeting that week.
Okay, well, first, we actually, Tom skipped over that we needed to vote on the date for the budget presentation of Wednesday, February the 4th. Previously, it was scheduled for Monday, February the 2nd, so can I have a motion to...
I move to change those dates.
Second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on the dates of the meeting? Why are you looking confused, Tom?
Well, I'm not sure you need to vote.
Yeah.
We don't need to vote on changing it?
I think we only need to vote to set the hearing.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the hearing is the night?
Correct.
Okay.
So I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
I withdraw my second.
Good lord, we're getting punchy. All right, so next item, sliding scale?
So, yeah, as agenda indicated, also in the packet, is a updated version of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Full-Day Kindergarten Sliding Scale. This year, we had five or six individuals apply and qualify for a reduced rate, based on the income guidelines of this year's sliding scale. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education updates it every year, so what you have in front of you is the proposed amounts, the tuition, the income amounts, that would qualify families for a reduced rate. The only other piece that I would add would be that we also approved last year a discount for multiples, for the second, third, and so on, student in a family, we gave them a discount of 10%. So I would add that to consideration for the committee.
Okay.
I move on the recommendation, finance subcommittee, the school committee adopt the use of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education FY16 Full-Day Kindergarten Tuition Sliding Scale as presented. Is there, do you need a second motion on this?
No, you can include it.
As well as discounts for parents of, or for families with multiples.
For the second, third...
For the second, third, fourth, and so on, children attending kindergarten in the same year.
A 10% discount?
10%.
Of 10%.
Of 10%.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion on the sliding scale motion? All right, all those in favor? All right.
I'm not going to make it on my own motions, Tom.
Well, you know. All right, so in respect to time...
Janet, excuse me, there's one more item.
Oh.
We have a building use request.
Yes.
So there's a building use request from the JCC to rental of the auditorium and the CAP, which is not listed on this document, they updated that since it initially submitted here at the high school for March 2nd, on Monday evening, to show a, or to present a film festival. I guess this will be the third showing of a series of movies related to individuals with disabilities. Last year, it was held in conjunction with the high school, this year, it's the high school's best buddies, friends... Um, this year, it's the high school's best buddies friendship collaboration in conjunction with the JCC sponsoring the event.
All right.
So Finance Subcommittee did recommend this. It is in front of school committee because the estimated attendance is greater than 50 individuals, which under our building use policy requires school committee approval.
I move to accept the Bill, the Finance Subcommittee recommendation to allow the building use request for the JCC Kalia Special Munch Program in conjunction with Realities Film Festival to take place on March 2nd, 2015.
Katie, second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right. Policy, um, I know that, Michael, did you want to address the policy subcommittee update, and then if you want to go right into the motion for approval?
Sure. I gotta remind, I gotta reacquaint myself very quickly with the policy.
There's that one.
Oh, thanks. Where did I miss that? Okay. Um, all right, so we do have a couple policies for review. Uh, policy JBA, student-to-student harassment, and both policy JICFD, bullying prevention, will be back for final review and approval at the next meeting.
Okay, and then you have the, um... Policies for approval.
Yes, that's right. Super prepared for this. Uh, okay, the school committee, the school committee had policy JBA, student-to-student harassment, and policy JICFD posted to the district's website. We did receive one letter regarding bullying prevention. Both of these policies have been reviewed and recommended by legal counsel. It's important to note that the bullying prevention policy was updated in accordance with the Attorney General's Office's recommendations. That's the one policy that does have to go through the AG's office, um, as it is required by law and has to be approved by them. The student-to-student harassment policy basically removes, um, staff. We're working on a second policy to address staff-to-staff harassment, or staff-to-student harassment. Yeah, it wasn't, it was not, it was that, we couldn't call it bullying, but it's that we would be talking about creating a policy that...
More harassment is policy.
Yeah, we're talking about that. So we removed staff from this, um, and we made it more specific at the request of our counsel. So that's, that's what's up.
Motion.
So I move on the recommendation of Policy Subcommittee, that the school committee approved the draft policies, JBA, student-to-student harassment, and JICFD, bullying prevention.
Policies as...
Policies as presented. Diane, this is all out of whack.
So, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Okay. So we got the policies done.
I don't even know what I'm looking at now.
All right, I know. Hold on now, we have the Western Mass Education Leaders Coalition, or WMELC, as some of us are fondly referring to it. Marie and I have been attending joint district meetings for superintendents and school committees.
Oh, is this the Wilbraham?
No, this is not solely Wilbraham. This is, in July, we've had 10 local school districts meet, um, at the Wilbraham, Hamden-Wilbraham High School, to discuss common responses to and concerns with recent federal and state initiatives. And that meeting has led us to form a coalition called the Western Massachusetts Educational Leaders Coalition, or WMELC, WMELC. And to date, we've gotten, together with nine superintendents, 12 school committee members, representing 10 of the Western Mass school districts, and executive directors of two of the educational collaboratives have also participated. So it's an opportunity where we can share concerns regarding implementations of new curriculum standards, forms of testing, state and federal mandates, um, you know, the speed with, at which they're coming to us, the lack of funding to go with them. So we did meet on December 4th and developed a position statement, which has been endorsed, or we're asking for endorsement this evening on this. And it's the intent to gather endorsements from other superintendents and school committees in Western Massachusetts prior to issuing the statement formally to policymakers and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
I think the superintendents have been concerned throughout the state, the number of initiatives and the pace. I think if you teach, if you speak to our teachers in the classroom, the stress level's high, you're looking at putting in the DDMs, we have changes in curriculum and more. And what this is an attempt is to ask the DESE and the commissioner to look at the number of initiatives. Michael, what did you say, there were 1,500? Somebody started earlier, about 1,500 over the past couple of years.
I think that was the superintendent from Ludlow.
Oh.
That there have been a significant number. The superintendents actually had a group that listed every single one and, and asked us to do it. This also talks about checking out park before we move forward and not to make a rash decision on that, to make sure the schools have the technology, to make sure the test is valid, et cetera. Then the third one is also the amount of standardized testing. I think within our own district, as well as throughout the Commonwealth, we feel that the students are overtested. If you count up the amount of days they spend testing, it's really, it's exorbitant. So this is to, to ask them to look at how we get good feedback on our students, but not to overtest. We named it the Western Coalition because we really feel like the western part of the state has not been heard from enough. We're smaller districts and we're a little bit detached, but we're hoping to unite with our superintendents and school committees throughout the western parts, that we have more of a voice. So this is a leadership group. We're asking the, uh, the LEA, the union, to endorse this, the school committee, as well as the administration, and then this will, will be given back. When we have enough districts endorsing it, it will be sent to the commissioner, as well as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and Secretary of Education.
Katie? Sorry. I, I think it's great. I, I guess my one question would be, um, would teachers be welcome on the committee to as leaders in the classroom?
Uh, I'm not sure, because it's a very large community to begin with, so I probably would say it's limited. I think that, that we would probably have the representation of the superintendent representing the teachers, but I'm, I'm sure at some point, we could certainly ask the union to come in. We are asking unions to sign this and...
You know, you have to select a union rep or someone that can go back to the union meetings.
You can have TIA rep.
Yeah. That's a good idea. I'll mention it.
We can certainly bring that up at our next meeting.
Yeah. I think if they did bring union presidents, that would be extremely powerful, too.
Yeah, you know, I just think the more voices and the more, it's sort of in the trenches.
Even if they send their union reps, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So the question was, and the motion before us now is, will the school committee endorse this position statement and allow Marie and I to sign off on it as school committee chair and superintendent of Long Meadow Public Schools?
I move that the school committee endorse the Western Mass Educator Leader Coalition statement, position statement dated December 3rd, 2014, and designate the superintendent of schools and the school committee chairperson to sign on behalf of the committee.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Kim?
I'm just, I like it. I just, it's the first time I'm hearing about it, besides reading it in my packet on Thursday. So I'm just, I had no idea that this was going on, so I'm, I, you know, I, are, do we have any, um, ideas of sharing this type of position statement with the community besides right now?
Uh, this has been written up about, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The Coalition did put out a position after one of our first meetings. It was covered in the local newspapers, um, based out of Hamden-Wilbraham.
The Hamden-Wilbraham...
I guess I missed...
No, it was in either the reminder, probably the reminder.
It was on Channel 5 as well?
I think this is to stir conversation, because we're having it on high-level educational summits, and it's coming up at superintendent's meetings. We now have superintendents that go to all DESI meetings and commissioner meetings, and we have representation. So I think this is to stir the dialogue, and we want people to know it's more than just superintendents that worry about this. So we thought if we could get school committees backing us, it's going to get more press and more attention, which is why we're trying to also spread outside the 10 districts that have been involved so far. So the goal, Kim, is to get a lot of buzz about this. I think that we should get it out to our community, the press, that we're endorsing this. I think it's many of the things that we have talked about many times on the committee, the pace, what kind of testing is right for our kids. So it, this really speaks to what our own district has been saying over the past couple of years.
Well, I know, I've heard you say it in offline, you know, conversations, and I've heard groups of parents, especially the Wilbraham-Hamden area, there's some groups of parents that are a little frustrated with some of these things. But I didn't, I guess I just didn't, I missed it earlier when they were, the fact that there's, you know, the superintendents are all talking about this and feeling frustrated, I, you know, it's happy to hear, and I'm, you know, just...
Good. And I agree with you, this, this needs to get out to the press more and more, but I think we are going to be the ones that we hope will make a statement that will get this moving again on a state level.
And I think too, Kim, you know, the, the group that's meeting, our next meeting's actually scheduled for Wednesday night. The hope was that the districts who, who have been there, that 10 initial, could get the endorsement of their school committees, and then once it's signed by all 10, that was going to be released to the press and then expanded upon. So it, it's not that anything has been intentionally, not released yet, but the, the feeling of the group is the strength in numbers part, especially from the western part of the state.
And this was also what we could agree on, upon, because there were some groups, I think that Hamden-Wilbraham has a faction that is anti-common core, and there were many in the room that are not anti-common core. So that was dropped from the statement. We, we really focused in on what everybody at the table agreed to.
And things that we felt we actually had a chance of...
Affecting change, huh?
Of affecting change.
Well, no, I mean, these are some, actually, some of the questions that came up at, in, what is it, last spring, when the DESI was having those park conversations?
Absolutely.
I mean, I, no, I asked some of these personally, myself, to the guy, and he didn't have really good answers for, for them, so.
And I think the hope of the committee is that with districts and school committees all signing and agreeing to these are basic issues that we're all having, is that the message gets to DESI and, um, the Department of Education and government where changes can be made. Or at least give answers to all of our questions. So any further discussion? All right, so with the motion on the table of endorsing the position statement, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, we have some preliminary field trip requests.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the school committee approved the preliminary request to secure price and make arrangements for students to travel from Long Meadow High School to Hawaii in February of 2016. Hawaii.
Nice. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is this, what is this?
The anniversary of Pearl Harbor. One of our music teachers comes from Hawaii, so they're pairing up with his home school to celebrate the anniversary of Pearl Harbor.
All right, okay, fine. I'll back off.
I remember trying many students and teachers about the whole district, but it's apparently a great honor, as it's explained to me, that we get to play.
Very, quite an honor.
So, um, cool.
It's a huge celebration. It's an honor for the district to be invited.
Okay, then I fully support it.
And if they need a chaperone, I'm available.
I've already volunteered.
I'll be graduated, welcome back to the College.
Okay, so we have a motion. Was there a second?
Second.
Wait, but I...
Are we voting on them individually or together?
We should vote on them individually, but I do have a question. Um, it's a, for, it's in honor of, it's an anniversary of the Pearl Harbor bombing.
In February?
In February?
Yeah, I know, that's what I...
It's not in December?
It's...
Maybe they tried to coordinate it with a break of ours.
It's on the application that it's...
That's the February break.
I know, but just going off of Pearl Harbor Day.
The way it's been explained to me is it's a celebration about the Pearl Harbor attacks, 75 years.
Maybe it's the whole year of celebration.
We're not celebrating, right? We're remembering and honoring.
Remembering and honoring for a year.
It's a memorial.
Okay, so...
All right, whatever.
All those in favor? All right.
That was, that's a good question, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
John would be proud. John would be very proud that you remember your history.
Yeah, that'll live in infamy. Um, all right, I move on the recommendation of this superintendent, that the school committee approved the preliminary request, secure prices and make arrangements for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Italy and Greece in April of 2016.
Second.
Motion in a second, Katie?
One more question about this. Last time we sent them to Italy and Greece, Greece was having austerity riots. Are we, we're good? We're not worried?
We check on this.
The left is party.
The left is just the other anti-austerity.
Before any trip goes out, we charite the State Department of agencies.
Okay.
Another vote.
I just want to flag that one again.
So...
As duly noted.
Again, you know, chaperones, I'll be happy to attend. All those in favor?
All right. And I move on the recommendation of the superintendent, that the school committee approved the preliminary request to secure prices and make arrangements for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Spain in February of 2016.
Second.
Now, they were having austerity riots last time, too.
Would you stop worrying about, thank you.
We're duly noted.
All right, all those in favor? And not to discriminate, I would be happy to chaperone there as well. All right, approval of warrants. Liz, would you mind?
Nope. We not need to be below the Paine Valley.
Andy's going to go. He's going to come and speak to us. So that one's being tabled for now, I'm sorry.
I lost my... My papers. Yes, please. Okay, thanks. Um, I'll do, it's all written on the paper.
Here, Liz. Do you want a minute, Liz, and we'll do minutes for warrants?
Okay.
Right. No? That looks better.
Yeah, I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2743 of the general operating fund FY15, dated January 30th, 2015, in the amount of 637,618.24.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Okay. I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the school lunch fund FY15, dated January 30th, 2015, in the amount of 1,00, oh geez, 110,652.94.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Katie, would you like to do the minutes?
Sure. I move that the school committee approve and not release the minutes to the executive session of December 22nd, 2014, school committee meeting as presented.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the December 22nd, 2014 school committee meeting as presented.
Good.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
And I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the January 15th, 2015, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, one thing that was not on the agenda, but that has come up regarding minutes, is does the school committee wish to have minutes from subcommittee meetings made public?
Aren't they technically public?
Posted. They're public. Do we want them posted?[1746.13] Do we want them posted?
My only concern... I don't have a concern about it necessarily. My only question is, is it going to create extra, more undue work for Diane to do, or are you comfortable... Are you happy to do it?
Work to get it up there, but it's whatever the committee wants.
It's supposed to be accessible to the public?
Well, they can be... They're accessible to the public, but they can be requested if people so desire, as opposed to posting them online, like our current minutes are posted.
Finance and operations are already posted.
The operations, yeah, that are up there are old right now.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing current.
My... Yeah, again, my... I have no objection to it. I think it's good government at its finest. I just don't want to create more work for Diane.
I am a little worried. One of our assistants, Carla, is going out on grand jury duty, so we're going to be a little short-staffed for several months.
We're under... I mean, you know, I'd say if we have a plan to transition to do it in the medium term, you know, then...
That it can be something that we're working toward?
Yeah, I mean, it's an ongoing digitalization of all of our meeting minutes, you know, from a certain point forward. Fine.
Yeah, I think it could be a goal to get notes in a timely fashion to Diane in electronic form.
Right.
And we can head toward that, but I think we should make that a goal once we get done with her being on grand jury. We don't know the details just yet, but she could be out at least three days a week, which means we're all be picking up a bunch of work in the office.
You know, I think... Yeah. I mean, as long as it's not something that's creating a burden for anybody.
Right. So I think it's something that we can definitely work toward, and as a reminder for those who chair Subcommittee's, to please type up your minutes, get them approved at your meetings, and get those to Diane so that they are on record in case anybody does ask to see them.
Could you look into giving the chair of each committee access to that page on the website so they could post the minutes themselves once they're typed?
I don't think that we want to start that.
Never mind. Withdrawn.
Thank you, Joseph. All right.
I appreciate that suggestion.
Well, it would save you a lot of work.
Whatever the committee wants.
I will just say, don't take this offensively, Diane. When it comes to creating more work for Diane versus me having to do it, I'd rather create more work for Diane. Oh, my God.
He's so generous like that.
I said, don't take it offensively.
You can say whatever you want after that.
All right. So can I hit...
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? All right. Everybody be safe.
No school tomorrow.
No school tomorrow?
We forgot that announcement. We forgot to announce it.
Don't worry, I already tweeted it.
And let's pray it's good snow for snowballs and snowmen and women.
And sledding. But be safe with whatever you do.
Have you seen the boards and the snowmob around this town after Saturday?
They've been awesome. So thank you. Have a good night. We'll be back on Wednesday, February the 4th, for the initial budget presentation.
Before everyone scatters, if I could just have your ear for a second?
No.
So...
We don't need to be live.
No.